Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge. Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call roll. Mrs. Bates. Ms. Bolton.
Present.
Mrs. Bowers. Here. Mr. Lindy. Mr. Messer. Mr. Morosky.
Here.
President Jones. Here. Thank you. I need a motion for 48 to revise the agenda with a 48-hour waiver to add a resolution to appoint Cincinnati Public Schools Preschool Expansion Organization Board Representative.
No moves.
Sarah Seka.
Yep.
Okay, roll call. Treasurer Wagner. Ms. Bolton.
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Morosky.
President Jones.
Yes. Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your requests for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special emergency meeting June 25, 2021, special meeting June 28, 2021, and the business meeting June 28, 2021.
No moves.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Minutes are approved as presented. Okay, we're gonna take five minutes per committee report. Mr. Morosky, please present your committee report.
Be my pleasure. The Policy and Equity Committee met on June 24, 2021 at 9:00 a.m. via Blue Jeans, our final virtual meeting. We will be in person in August. A lot of what we talked about, we all talked about already, is a full board, so I'm gonna get through these pretty quick. We talked about a potential policy requiring vaccinations for employees, which as we know, we're not doing at this time, so we will move on from that item. We also talked about the potential of revisiting the requirement to wear masks, which in the committee, Ms. Tremble Oliver let us know the CDC's guidance was to continue wearing them, and in the full board meeting, we heard the same, so we elected not to make a change there. I think of note Representative Brenner in the state legislature is talking about, similar to the vaccine, that the law the governor signed making it illegal for employers to require a vaccine. Representative Brenner has proposed legislation doing the same for mask-wearing, specifically for public school districts, making it impossible for public school districts to require masks. That is brand-new. So I don't necessarily think we need to necessarily do anything about it now, but I think it's good for us to know if we are gonna consider going into the fall under the guidance and leadership of our health professionals and Sarah Tremble Oliver, something to keep our eye on. Excuse me. We are going to revise the bylaws as requested by this body to reflect committee of the whole that will be presented to us at August 26, committee meeting at 9:00 a.m. in person. We also talked about our evaluation of administrators, which we already approved at our last meeting, OPEZ, Ohio Principal Evaluation System 2.0, the policy 6320 of goods and services we approved at our last meeting, so no need to cover that. A lot of stuff now I'm teeing up for August 26. We'll be looking at policy 3111 and 4111, which is creating positions. 3111.1, selection of principals, we will be looking at that policy in some new language on August 26. As we will also be looking at policies 3112 and 4112, which are board employee communications. Now, this is kind of interesting, and the policies currently state that for anybody to communicate with us, they have to go through the superintendent. As we know, that's not, that's not the practice, nor would, I'm speaking for myself, but I would never expect Superintendent Amat to like filter all the communication through us. It's not reasonable. So we need to update it. What it'll look like, we don't know yet, but Mr. Hoying and Ms. Stephanie Scott will be looking at that and bring us new language, and we will have it for you in September. Um, excuse me. District organization, the responsibility sort of flow chart also will be presented August 20. August 26 might be a seven-hour meeting, it's looking like. And then we had hearing of the public, and we had two speakers, Ms., or Dr. Wasson Hove talking about vaccine policies, and Mr. Keller also talking about vaccine policies. I present the minutes as written.
Okay. Do board members have any questions or comments? Ms. Bolton.
Just a clarification from the chair. Could you repeat what you said about the CDC guidelines regarding what was reported?
When in the committee meeting, we were told that it was recommended that masks continue to be worn.
Recommended from CDC or recommended from our administration?
At the, well, at the time, it was the CDC and the administration, correct? At the time.
So these, that's current for, properly so.
Yeah.
It's current for the committee meeting.
Correct.
May not be current now.
For today.
Okay, thank you.
Now, no, that's a good clarification, correct. So at the time of the committee meeting, yes, that was the CDC's recommendation. Interestingly, today with the news out of Columbus, the American Academy of Pediatrics also released a statement saying that schools should still wear masks. So we'll, obviously, it will be something that will continue to be talked about, but at this time, at least after the last board meeting, it didn't seem that there was will.
I, I would also urge us that if there's a need for more questioning and discussion, we do have a safety, health and safety report of, I think, update, safety update, health and safety, so we might wanna address it to this time. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Ms. Bowers, please present the health and safety report.
Yes, I have the, um, the privilege of presenting the health and safety report from June 28, 2021. The report is inclusive of information part in the beginning of the minutes that can be reviewed to anyone who would like to read it, but I'm gonna start when the forum started, which is at 4:15 when I arrived to the meeting. When I arrived to the meeting, there was conversation between Chairperson Bates, inquiring about the Step Up the Quality Bill. Mr. Kearney, who was our government liaison, was present, and he expressed that all urban eight schools and other school districts across the state supported opposition to the Step Up the Quality Bill, which is to eradicate or eliminate that kind of level of qualification for preschool. Um, he, um, government liaison Kearney also reported that the budget, the 2022 to 2023 fiscal year budget included additional $250 million of broadband. He wanted to make note of that. Mr. Kearney informed the committee about state legislation loving our district summer scholars program, and then how we talked a little bit about following up on the status and legalities of returning to in-person meetings, which we are, Mr. Morosky has already explained that we are okay to go ahead and do that in August. CPS facilities, safe community update, our chief strategy officer, Sarah Tremble Oliver, reported about the city of Cincinnati over the past years created the vision to deroute safe routes to school action. She talked about data analysis that was done on roadways, traffic crashes, traffic volume, pedestrian accidents, and speed limits. She also noted that in 2020, the city of Cincinnati had 108 vision 2020 projects, and that 73% were in, within a half mile of a, of a school. The district received a safe routes for school non- infrastructure grant, and that that will be a program that's gonna be implemented, I think, no, I'm sorry, it will be used for an interactive pedestrian safety program at the schools. Student conduct discipline, Assistant Superintendent Bonny reported that she, and she shared the code of conduct with all the board members for the 2022 to 2023 school year. We gave feedback about it. Dr. Bunker was present and updated the committee on the positive school culture safety data. What we, what she shared was data, and I'm just gonna do a compare and contrast data from 2019, May 2019 and May 2021. Our office discipline referral numbers were 3,115, May 2019, and then May 21, that was down to about 1,526. Overall, the percentage of the office referrals that ended in exclusion, exposure or exclusionary consequences, which are punitive, was down very little, but like around 9% lower from May 2019 to May 2021. Dr. Bunker informed the committee of the city's, City of Cincinnati's free anti-vaping program, and Western Hills is gonna pilot that program beginning September 2021. An alternative learning center for care professionals, mental health workers, school nurses will be trained in that program also. She explained that the program is more restorative versus punitive. Dr. Bunker updated the committee on her plan for, on the plan for professional development for our, for positive, for professional development and positive school culture PD this year. Promise, we talked about the promise center, which was formerly the A to S, A to E, that will resume. We did not have A to S, A to E last school year during COVID, but we will resume that, and it's now known as a promise center. Dr. Bunker reported the discipline data for summer schools was not available to us. I think that was asked by committee member Bates. Assistant Superintendent Bonty informed the committee that she and Dr. Bunker met with Grant Us Hope group. There was some discussion around the relevance of cultural relevance of this program. There was lots of discussion around it being equitable, it being appropriate for urban school districts. This program is a program that's used, has been used and has evidence-based for more rural school areas, and so there was inquiry of why we even are entertaining that if it doesn't meet the equity that we require for, in our school. What we did find out that this was a appropriated funds to the city of Cincinnati, the program allegedly is supposed to implement more diverse, I guess, program, or activities. Me personally, I was concerned about the Grant Us Hope's current material, curriculum not being in line with our equity policy and that there are programs already in place that are. So personally, I have requested that the administration provide feedback about the curriculum of the committee before launching a pilot, which is supposed to be launched across two schools beginning of this school year. So I'm hopeful to get that information back before we move forward with that. We talked about the school resource officers, memorandum of understandings. We talked about having a committee engaging with parents, principals, and community members that have historical, have done historical work with the police department to participate in discussion, and I think that we are, at this meeting, we had a timeline discussed, but I think we're gonna readjust some of those things in the timeline. Committee member Bates reported that she and I actually visited the Hayes Porter School. We visited the youth police cadets there, had a nice engagement with them, got information, really received a lot of information really from them. And I think that's all I'm going to report on. I present these minutes as written.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Morosky.
If Ms. Bowers is okay with it, I'd love to know what your concerns with the curriculum about Grant Us Hope are, being that you're a professional in that area.
As noted, my concern is that Grant Us Hope has not been evidence, there's no evidence that it's been used in the urban school district. This, this program has been used in rural, I'm not sure, the state Utah mostly, and maybe, I mean, I know it's, I think, committee member Bates said that it's something that the state kind of approved also, but there's no evidence that the curriculum is culturally relevant to our population. They haven't done any evidence based on that. And that was a concern that Deputy Superintendent Bonty also had also, which is why she went, she's going back to ask them to provide some information within their curriculum.
So that was, I mean, I caught all that. The part that had me perk up was the piece about their material and curriculum not being in line with the equity, so I didn't know if there was some more information on what the actual curriculum was. A quick visit to the website shows me that every single person working for them is white. So, which, you know, I guess is fine, but not really, not for me anyway. So I didn't know if you had more curriculum. I'll research it myself, but I was curious in your opinion, because that is, you know, an area that's your area, so.
Well, the reason that I, that my response is with Deputy Superintendent Bonty and, and Dr. Bunker, that it did not entail culturally relevant curriculum.
Yeah.
And then we found, and even Superintendent Amat inquired about, well, why are we even considering this? And then that's when we talked about this was appropriated funds, some collaboration with the city. And then Chairmember Bates probably could express more about how we even got to this point with that, without knowing all the details about the curriculum.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Bolton, out of committee.
Thank you very much. Happy to report initially, we continue our work regarding the benefits efforts, the audit and making improvements and corrections. Also, Mr. Hoying presented to the community audit committee an update on insurance coverage for the district and talked about the market significantly costing more with not necessarily additional benefits as such. So that took up some time for our folks to ask some questions about that. And then we did talk with our internal auditor, Director of Internal Audit, about fiscal year 22 risk assessment overview, and I would encourage people on the board to check that out. Also talked, she shared with us the fiscal year 22 planned engagements as to what she would be looking at, including such things as accounts payable and data analytics, district strategic plan support and what have you. Then we had a multi-year cycle as to what the future looks all the way into fiscal year 24 as it pertains to the, the Director of Audits in her time and what we do in the community audit committee. There was then a very robust conversation and discussion about the outstanding job that our Director of Internal Audit does, and then also making sure that we have no mission creep, so to speak, and that she is able to maintain the independence that that position requires. And the treasurer was then going to kind of look into how we can make sure that it's clear within the district of that internal auditor's independence and not being seen as an extension of the administration, but actually an extension of the audit committee and the boards, the board itself, especially the finance committee. So it was good discussion, great support for our Director of Internal Audit, and I know the treasurer's been coming up with perhaps a different title that might make it clearer as to that independence, because more and more people are using her services, rightfully so, because of the quality of her work. So that's the report. I don't know if the treasurer would like to add anything as to what she's been thinking about as to finish that, the minutes, but I submit approval.
So I was just gonna comment that I was going to recommend that her title be changed to Chief Internal Auditor, because she is a direct reporter of the board, so that's very appropriate for her, the chief level title.
That would be great. I know the audit committee would, your finance would be as well, and we'll bring it back to the board to see if the board approves.
Okay. Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments about the audit report? Yes.
I can't question myself, but I want to take the opportunity to, once again, say as often as I can about the quality of the community audit committee that we have. Remarkable group of professionals lending their time and expertise, and I've been on it for a very long time, and I've been marveling for a very long time, but they've really, through the diversity efforts that the board engaged in, and the leadership, and the continuing commitment of so many of those men and women, I just, I think we stand alone in the state for sure regarding the quality of our audit committee.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Okay, so tonight, we have two presentations. The first one is a budget update that Treasurer Wagner will present, and then Superintendent Amat will introduce our second presentation, safety plan update. Ms. Jones, we still have to do the voice vote on the minutes. I'm sorry, we still have to do the voice vote on the minutes. I'm just trying, you know, I'm trying to get through it. I'm sorry, yes. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
No moves.
Ms. Sarah Seka. Treasurer Wagner. Voice vote. All in favor. All in favor of approving the minutes. Say aye. Any oppose? Minutes are approved. Thank you. Okay, now we're ready for the presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here today to present to you an update, three key points or three things to take away from tonight, is that we did approve the temporary 90-day appropriations that ends in September, so we are targeted to have a board-approved budget by the end of August, and there have been some changes based on the state budget that was adopted. We're gonna go a little bit over the ESER funding, the three-year plan, and the requirements for community engagement and the feedback, and then the process that we're going, we've started using to address the cliff. So on the state budget, you remember that we got the news on the June 28th, two hours or three hours before your board meeting, that they did appoint, they did adopt the budget, and two major things that are affecting our budget that we will change in August. One is they are now direct paying all the voucher and charter school tuition, so our revenues will go down about $80 million, but our expenses will also go down $80 million. The second change is they are putting the student wellness money back into the general fund, so that we'll increase that by 12 million. So if you recall, the original House bill indicated we were gonna get about $15 million next year for student wellness, then the Senate bill said we're only getting 10. Well, we ended up, they froze us at this year's value, so at 12 million. So we're working through those changes, but those are the two biggest changes for the budget, the reappropriation value that we will bring toward in August. So here's a very high level of the three-year plan. I made an attempt to identify which of the categories in the grants that line items would fit into. Sometimes they fit into more than one item, and I just chose one. We can discuss those, but two grants put together allocate to the district, 297 million is to be spent, ESER 2 by '23 and ESER 3 by '24. And ESER 3 is commonly referred to as the ARP or the American Rescue Plan. So we made an attempt to determine how much money was gonna be carried into fiscal year 22 from the original CARES money, and what, how do we, what do we need to spend our money on in order to support moving forward, Contingent Sewers Learning Law, preventing learning loss and preventing virus spread. And then as we went through each line item, determined how would that be phased out? Would it continue? Was it a recurring expense and at what level? Or maybe it was a one-time expense and it didn't recur, but this is the current draft, and as you can see, the total is just a tad over the 297, so we still have work to do to close that, refine some of our estimates. Now, I'm gonna go through each section and just kind of show you a graphical picture. The doc, the big, long document that you have in front of you are all the line items and the add-ups to these charts. It's just too big of a document to share publicly. But under health and safety, you know, it's pretty widespread. But we're spending money on cleaning, a lot of cleaning and facilities, facility supplies, furniture and equipment, not technology, but other kinds of equipment. Nursing services is a very large chunk of that money, and services to students, staff such as the safety paras and the crisis communications manager, custodians and substitute custodians, and the safety coordinator. Moving on to in-person learning, some of these items are classroom supplies, most of it is curriculum, that the curriculum adoption, evidence-based curriculum is a requirement from ESER. Musical instruments that we're expanding and supporting at Walnut Hills as well, mathematics manipulatives, more services to the students. I didn't write that down, but let me just check it out real quick. The lion's share of the services to students are transportation, support in-person learning, you know, bringing the kids there. But on the staffing side, super subs, bringing back ADA to S, or I'm sorry, the promise center, and that's about it, and some textbooks. So under physical distancing, this is where all the facilities expansion growth item estimates are. You can see each project and the estimated cost, it's split out. Under student and staff social, emotional, and we have the district-wide vendors to support teachers, the staff trauma support, athletics. So we had, in the budget balancing, we moved, shifted some increases from athletics and extracurriculars, bringing that back to the district in a full load, and we put that in the CARES money. And then some money for, to supporting positive school culture. Under the student academic needs, this is where we have all that technology, the device leases and the infrastructure expansion, first grade reading specialist, the family support center, the student success centers starting in year two, and then $20 million for summers, $20 million each year for summer scholars. Under student accommodations, this is probably the smallest section, and it's to support students with disabilities. The line items there is the bus monitors that are required by IEPs, and then some one-on-one supports through some contractors. So this is a graphical summary of everything I just told you. I thought it was interesting that the, about a third was spent on health and safety, third in person, a third in student academic needs, of course, a little bit less than a third, because then you have physical distancing in there for the majority, but I just thought it was interesting how it allocated out. So then after tonight, we're required, and the quote in the grant is meaningful consultation with all stakeholders, and so our public affairs department is kicking off our thought exchange tomorrow, and there's five different methods of communication to people about participating, and then we will share that feedback on the, at the August 9 meeting and how it impacts the plan that we just shared. So we turn our sights to that, one of my favorite graphs of all time, the cliff, and this is how we're planning to address the cliff. The first thing we need to do is reduce the estimated expenditures to meet that grant allocation, so we're a little bit, we're about $27 million away. And then as we do that, we will look, we started categorizing all the expenses into, do we need to stop it because it's a one-time expense, or do we only need it during the COVID period, and we no longer need it after that? Or do we need to phase it back and bring it back to the general fund sooner than we'd anticipated, such as athletics was one of those? And then the rest will be identified. If we have to keep it and continue it, we're gonna use our strategic plan, our strategic value rubric to determine what scope and what funding source it could go to, and whether it's a worthy expense and continuing to invest in. So as we evaluate our current programs and projects, even outside of the CARES money, because we have to make room in the general fund for things to come back to it, we're also gonna be evaluating full performance on each of those projects or line items. This is a picture, and what we're trying to do is tie the strategic plan measures to the items that we're talking about. And so this, you can't read this as tiny, but it's just a, you're familiar with this document, with the strategic measures on it. And Sarah and I took a stab at giving you some examples. The next slide talks about the rubric, and you're familiar with this, where we where we try to weight impact on academics in the strategic plan with higher weightings. In an effort to calculate an academic return on investment. So here's, here's an example. This is a work in progress and it's very draft. But we tried to separate everything that was in the CARES Act grant into, are employees impacted? Are they contracted services? Or are there other things? So the first section I'm showing you that these are the employees that are funded by CARES Act right now. What's the value in that third year? So what's going to have to hit the general fund in the next year if we continue? Or at what rate do we want to continue it? And then possibly we won't need to do it anymore. Then we took a stab at giving some examples of what these measures would look like. What measures are we going to use to make those determinations? For example, the first line item there is reading specialist. So the academic strategic plan measure is first grade reading scores and on-grade level work measured through the two-week cycle assessments and English language, ELLA. As an example, we didn't go through it all. We didn't feel comfortable. Sarah and I didn't feel comfortable doing it for the entire PLT items. And so we're going to do that in our next meeting. This section shows you contracted services. So you remember in several meetings, I say, at the end of the grant, what are we going to do with our nurses? Because we've expanded beyond what we were pre-COVID. And so that's just one of the examples that's on this list here. Now, in full transparency, I listed the student wellness two items because that student wellness value or the formula is probably going to change every two years. And so we just, those are conversations that we should start having now, moving forward, if that funding source changes. And then this is everything else that's in CARES that's not an employee or contractor. And so we haven't started working on that yet. But that's the process we intend to use to determine funding priorities that are attached to strategic goals and having a positive academic or operational impact. So with that, I'll entertain questions.
Board members, anybody have questions or comments on the report? Ms. Bowers?
Yes, thank you, Treasurer Wagner. When, in the beginning, when you talked about the student wellness being moved back into general funds, is that inclusive of our social workers?
Yes.
And they are not on this timeline with the ESER 1.3? Or are they?
They're not on the same timeline, no. But that's an example of a staff member that's funded by grant. Now, it's no longer considered a grant because they put it in the formula, and they're having us move all that stuff into the general fund. So as long as the state foundation formula doesn't change dramatically, we should be okay.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. Thanks so much for this work. So as a member, Lindy always says we have a once-in-a-generation amount of money coming our way. And so important that you are focusing on really actually three years in a way. And that's why this becomes so important. Is this the time to mention some specifics that I have concerns about? Or is that better for the retreat? Or should I just be general in some of my comments?
So under Board Matters, we're going to do a little activity. We're going to try an activity to gather those concerns. So I'll leave that up to you. I'm happy to entertain them now or gather, capture them then. And then we can respond to them at the retreat.
That would be great. Generally, I still think we're spending, devoting way too much money in the continuation of the COVID piece. I know that sounds like, that sounds stupid and scary, but it's still becoming so much more a part of what we do versus some of the other things that could, I think, also be positively impacting. I know that as we all learn as to how to organize ourselves, I still think there is money that needs to be spent on our high schools. Particularly, I don't like having to wait for the success center roll in or roll out, whatever it is, until the next year. I am thrilled about the CPS outside and thank the interim superintendent. When she was deputy, she embraced that, and I appreciate it. I do think there's an opportunity for us to merge a little bit of that with the green initiative by the city of Cincinnati. And I think that that could, that could be helpful to us. And I really hope that we broadly think how we could use CDA even more broadly than we initially had been thinking because it's such a great opportunity to reduce some of the stress at the site levels. Frankly, if CDA is working through, again, I'm very supportive of the employment or career specialists. I hope the Promise Center takes care of my concerns about ADEA to S, which I was happy that was something from the past. So I think it would be great to be able to talk a little bit more about it. Encouraged about the thinking, we've got to fund at least the effort after we have some more dialogue on the effort on Meridian Plan, or we're going to wait another two or three years for that to actually take place. The information that we're kind of hearing now might make it more important than ever. But those are the, some of the general big issues that I have. And I'm very committed to that concurrent space as an engagement space as well as maybe a little bit more emphasis that would be very inexpensive, I think. And that's PTA or PTO or PSA memberships for our families. So just some issues on engagement. But I still think we're in a COVID frame of mind, and I understand why we are. But we might need to be thinking about that.
So thank you. I took really good notes. I do want to respond to that comment about the COVID frame of minds because as the grants have come in, the spending restrictions have gotten more defined. So CARES 1, it was like, just survive. Spend it on whatever you need to do to survive. ESER 2 is a little bit tighter. It's about learning loss and virus protection. And ESER 3 is more about in-school. I mean, it's not about new strategic things. This is, they are very, very careful about what we're spending our money on. And so I'd be careful about spending unrelated COVID items, if that makes sense.
I could respond to that very quickly. Totally understand, and I appreciate the way that you've categorized this today, that it is categorized in order to meet those demands. I'm very appreciative of it. So yes, I think we have to be much more careful. But I think you've done a good job in categorizing it. Thank you.
Okay, and I just want to reiterate, oh, I'm sorry, you go ahead first with your questions. You had your hand up.
It'll be super quick because it's not really for Ms. Wagner, I don't think. And Ms. Bunty isn't here, so, and it might even be an assignment. But I would love, I mean, it could be at the board retreat. But something that is on my mind is I would love some detail regarding the Promise Center and more restorative practice and less punitive. And like what that means and how exactly ADEA to S is going to be dramatically different. So again, not really a question and answer now, but I just want.
Okay.
Ms. Jones, may I ask a quick question on page eight? My name is listed, so if you can.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
That's back when you were the deputy.
Now, on page eight, as far as under Student Academic Needs. So if you can explain. But I just want to be clear because this is a public document, that I don't have any personal.
On page eight or slide?
Slide eight.
What's the top of it?
Student Academic Needs.
Oh, I see it. Yeah.
Oh. Yeah, I think when I was copying and pasting from my spreadsheet, I did.
Okay.
My apologies. Yes, we're investing in this amount.
What?
But say a thing about it, because I thought, well, that's, she's really made a pretty good deal here.
I'm, my apologies.
That's a good pickup.
Mr. Business Public are listening.
Okay, Ms. Bowers?
Does that, well, since it's there, does that change your grid a little bit? Your cost? Because she's up under the cost too.
Yeah, it's not.
That's something else.
It, I'll tell you what it is. I just copied the wrong. It's a Student Success Center. I will correct that and resend it.
Thank you. Okay, so I did want to remind board members, we do have in the Board Matters of, I believe Ms. Bolton expressed interest in talking a little bit about the expectations of the board retreat. So some of the comments that I'm hearing would actually fit under that particular conversation. And I know you have an exercise for us that we'll do, but it'll help us frame. So we'll be ready when we have that board retreat. We just dive right in. So, yeah, so we'll get to that too and be ready to discuss that.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Superintendent Ahmatt?
Our next presentation is a Safety Plan Update from our Chief Strategy Officer, Ms. Tremblot.
Good evening.
Hello.
This presentation falls under the strategic goal of health and safety. Certainly a goal that has taken a lot of our time and attention and funds over the last year and a half. I'm actually really excited tonight to present some recommendations to our safety plan that are moving in the right direction. We'll be able to relax some of the safety precautions in our schools, but not all of them, of course, because COVID is still with us. So the recommendations tonight are informed by the following. Our current community COVID rate is at two daily cases per 100,000 and the positivity rate at 2.8%. In-school transmissions are at 129. For vaccination rates, we know that for our staff, we're over 70%. We are still trying to get a good number on the percent of our students that have been vaccinated. We have in our data tracking system, 11% of our students over age 12 just through our own clinics. We know that the vaccination rate will be higher for anyone who was vaccinated outside of our own clinics. So just for reference, I provided information that I got from the Cincinnati Health Department about Hamilton County. So 29% for age 12 to 14 and 37% age 15 to 19. We also held a safety workshop on June 30th with stakeholders, including parents and teachers, principals, Children's Hospital, and the Cincinnati Health Department to discuss safety precautions in our schools for next year and gathered some great stakeholder feedback at that session. As was mentioned in the update from the Policy Committee last, or in June, there have been some recent, recently as today, guidance that has come out to inform safety precautions in schools. The CDC did release some new updated guidelines after that Policy Committee meeting. It was released on July 9th. We also got information about a new Ohio law that was signed into law last week, July 14th. And I'll talk about that. And today, hot off the press, some information from American Academy of Pediatrics, which I'll include as well. So the recommended changes to our safety plan for next year are as follows. Elimination of the temperature checks at the buildings. Eliminating the staggered bus arrival. Permitting field trips. Permitting visitors and volunteers following our, all of our safety protocols. Permitting work-related travel. Permitting shared classroom materials. Distancing during meals to be at a minimum of three feet. And then the last two are precautions that we're recommending keeping in place. Continuing to quarantine close contacts. And lastly, masks still required for everyone indoors, but not required outdoors. And that is, of course, pending Policy Committee discussion. All other precautions, such as hand hygiene, disinfecting protocols, ventilation, and isolation rooms will remain in place. So a little bit more about the mask policy. Two weeks ago, the Centers for Disease Control did release updated guidance for schools that says mask use is recommended for people who are not fully vaccinated. They also say that schools may choose to keep their universal mask requirements if for the following reasons. Having a student population that is not yet eligible for vaccination. Lacking a system to monitor the vaccine status. Difficulty monitoring or enforcing mask policies that aren't universal. And awareness of low vaccination uptake. Today, the American Academy of Pediatrics released a stricter recommendation that all students over the age of two and all school staff should wear masks at school unless there is a condition that prohibits this. And the reasons are significant proportion of students that are not eligible for vaccination and potential difficulty in monitoring and forcing mask policies. Last week, also hot off the press, House Bill 244 was signed into effect. It actually goes into effect in October. But interestingly, not only does it not permit school districts to require vaccines, it also does not allow school districts to require unvaccinated individuals to take precautionary measures that vaccinated individuals are not required to take. Which is different, exactly different than what the CDC recommends. So those are some of the complicating factors and recent developments that have gone into our recommendation, which again, currently from the administration, the recommendation is that masks still be required for everyone indoors until we reach a higher rate of student vaccination. We do realize that this, that would take a significant amount of communication to our families and our students about why. I was asked to present some recommendations or possibilities for board meetings. We know that board members must now be physically present in order to count in a quorum or to vote at board meetings and committee meetings. We can, if it is the board's will, open board meetings to the public, both in-person and continual, continue virtually. The capacity of the in-person board meetings would be determined by this space. And we could, if it is the board's will, offer a hearing of the public, both in-person and virtual. We believe that we have the capacity to manage that. For board committee meetings, similarly, board members must be physically present to count in a quorum or vote. Although board members may participate virtually, just not count in a quorum or vote. And as well as board committee meetings could be open in-person and virtual. And that would, again, the capacity of the in-person would be determined based on the space we're using, such as the banquet room. So next steps for the update to the district's safety plan would be to publish the updated plan and communicate the changes to staff and families. Continue to hold student vaccine clinics so that we can continue to increase that vaccination rate, which will allow us to continue to relax some of our safety precautions. And as we know, as I've, as we just talked about, many things are changing constantly. So we would appreciate being able to continue the conversation as, as the data changes and as new guidance changes. And that concludes the presentation.
Do board members have questions or comments? I do. Okay, so several things. One is we've been offering vaccines to various clinics for the young people, for our students. Are we doing any sort of campaign to educate and communicate with them about the importance? Or, you know, how are we getting the word out about these clinics or whatever?
Yes, so Krista, you can correct me if I give any wrong details. But I've seen some of our normal communication channels to parents about these vaccine clinics, which are social media, email, and website.
So are we doing any other type of campaign, like a student-friendly campaign, giveaways, or anything like that to encourage them? Education, because they, you know, kids think they're invincible, so, yeah.
We have to get permission from parents, so we're using.
We have to get permission from parents, so we're using the summer block parties with the partnership with the Health Department. And there has been a lot of education right on site. So families have came in to one block party, got the information, and then returned to another block party after they made their decision to get vaccinated. So we are using that opportunity to get out. The Health Department is also at other city locations outside of our locations, but we are taking that opportunity to educate families and students when they come in.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Bowden.
Yes, thanks, Sarah. I have a question about the data that we get. We have our CPS unit, 11%, we have the Hamilton County data, but because in the Health Department that's giving you that data, do we have the city of Cincinnati data?
Yes, the Cincinnati Health Department, Dr. Amin, is working on getting us that data. She did not have it in time for this presentation, but they are working on being able to get that to us and provide it regularly.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Bolton?
Mr. Morosky here.
Okay, I just, I didn't see his hand, but go ahead. Doesn't matter, go ahead.
It doesn't matter. I still very much am unable to understand why people who are fully vaccinated have to wear masks unless you're only talking about enforcement. That universal reason to do it would be enforcement, okay? But let me tell you, we taught teenagers for 36 years, the first couple of days, they start showing their card that they've been fully vaccinated, then you're going to have teachers and everybody enforcing the mask piece. And it's hard to, it's hard to explain to anybody why people fully vaccinated have to wear masks. I still, I'm just not buying that. But my other, my other issue, very frankly, is the reason that we had to shut down and confuse the community at least four times, maybe six, was because of staff attendance. It was not that we had the pandemic spread wide. It was not that we weren't doing what the science people were telling us or what their health experts were telling us, it's because we had attendance issues. So I, my question is, where are we really? I see these different numbers as to how many staff members are actually vaccinated. And I wonder, you know, I don't want to interrupt anybody's privacy or what have you, but I'd really like to know just how specific that actually is. And what are we doing? The last time we talked as a board about it, we talked about the, you know, the encouraging people, because the union said encourage us, don't necessarily demand this of us. I'm just saying, as one board member, I really do not want to shut this district down again. And at the heart of shutting it down all that time was attendance of staff, because we couldn't do what we needed to do. It reached some number, which great analytics, that was, I was very impressed that you all did that. It reached like 40 something, I can't remember what it was. It was like a magical number and it was clear. And it wasn't about the unsafety, the lack of safety in our buildings, it was that we had the attendance. So I want to add to that, about, I want to know more specifically about staff member percentage, but also, I know we've gotten a couple of letters from the community as well about the quarantine issue, that that also takes our children out of school. And I noticed that that's still happening in these recommendations. We, that's a great worry. And also, if we're going to be the only district that's doing this, the general messaging to the community is that something's wrong with us. Not that we're being the safest district, but something must be wrong at CPS. I'm worried about the messaging of this.
Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Jones. So we'll, we'll put the mask piece, again, to your point about any policy change, we'll have that back on the policy agenda again in August to chat about. So if you could be there again, that'd be great. It's always super helpful for us. And then I'll just, I just want to add my two cents to something that was on the, on the screen that I think was asking for our feedback. I am more than happy to welcome people back into the Ed Center for our meetings. So it's just my opinion. What?
Just to respond to that, I've actually been working with that just on behalf of the board and need to get more information. And I'm, I'll be happy to talk with Sarah about it, just in terms of the spacing and all that. And it's more of a coordination of how we do hearing of the public and things like that, but those are the things we've been working on. But it's been difficult to get anything, to do anything with that, because a lot of our staff have been on vacations.
Awesome, thanks. And then Ms. Bolton, to your point about the mask thing, with that new law, it seems, and I think this is what you were alluding to when you were talking about the enforcement piece, because I hear you. You know, I think all of us, you know, we're, we're getting out and about more and more. And I know you find, you know, getting more and more used to not having a mask on, it still feels a little weird sometimes, but with that new law, it's literally, it's like an all or nothing. That's the part that I struggle with, because again, I, as a, you know, former teacher, this is, this is, this is obstructive, especially for the little folks, I mean, the bigger folks too. But my, my biggest problem with that law that was signed wasn't so much the mandate piece as much as it was that other part of it that I'm glad you pointed out, Ms. Trimbleoll Oliver, that, because I think, I don't think a lot of people know about that part, that they, they made it impossible to differentiate. So yeah, it's, we'll talk about it, I guess, in August.
I, I just thought I had my two cent word. I'm not sure if I'm confused about the position that Ms. Bolton is taking, and I don't want to read words into that or interpret that, but for me, I think that I'm okay with the recommendations that are here. And to use an example, it's like, okay, so we opened up across the country, for the most part. You know, and I don't want to make this a political issue, but we've heard people say that the pandemic is for the unvaccinated, okay? So when I go to Target and I go in, I'm the only one wearing a mask. And, and now we have the speed of the variant that's hitting states like crazy and it's hitting young people. And so I want to do everything that we can, I don't want to shut down. And so once we start getting increases in, in the virus, these quarantines come into play or whatever, I mean, it's, I think the more we can do upfront to stop the spread, which might be wearing masks, you know, when we, when we say people who are not vaccinated shouldn't have to wear masks, well, what ends up happening is that then everybody stops wearing masks, because those who are not vaccinated aren't going to wear masks anyway. But I do think that we, I think, you know, I don't see anything different happening in the schools, other than us encouraging people to wear masks. Now, what happens if people just outright refuse to wear masks? I don't know. I don't want to kick people out of school or whatever, but I do think we have to continue to be very firm and say, we're requiring that. And we still have to remember that there are kids under the age of 12 who are not vaccinated. And so that, that's kind of where I am. It's, it's a mixed bag. I just want the year to start successfully, you know, get our kids in here. I think everybody's excited about it, but I still think we have to be safe. And we can open up to some extent, but I'm just not willing at this time to just open up completely. Go ahead, Ms. Bowden.
And just a segue from that, and just to reiterate, let's be clear that we that are vaccinated can still transpose this virus to someone unvaccinated. So let's don't forget that. And so when we're talking about why we're vaccinated, don't have to wear masks, because we can still get somebody else sick, even though we may not be sick. And I think we need to keep that in mind. In addition, I want to ask a question about people coming into committee meetings and how does, how is that managed? I mean, I know we talked about the banquet room. I mean, who monitors, who comes in and out? I mean, I don't, I wouldn't know how, I don't know what to do with that.
We would have to design a process to help, to set up how to monitor and set a capacity. And if, you know, if for, if for some reason there's a committee meeting that gets more than the capacity, the, those individuals would have to participate virtually.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Bolton.
Yeah, I think the, I think it's important to try to figure that out, so that board staff is not the ones trying to take the minutes and also police what's going on.
That's, that's one of the things that I've been trying to work with.
Yeah, so obviously we'll need security or whatever to do that. To me, the single most important thing, I know health and safety is there, but to me, it's not being forced again, ever, to be shut down. So my recommendation, my hope, is that we're spending 100% of our time trying to figure out how to get 100% of our employees vaccinated and getting them to want to be vaccinated if they're not, because that's what happens, that shuts us down. And regardless of all the other safety things we do, regardless of all the COVID frame of mind, if we have our employees that have been vaccinated, we know, we're clear, we won't shut down. And we have to be able to assure the people that are coming to this district that we are not shutting down.
Do you, do you believe honestly that 100% of our staff would be vaccinated willingly?
No, but I want more than 70%. And I think they have to face the fact that some of the people that refuse, I mean, there are parents who say that they don't want people teaching their children or feeding their kids if they're not vaccinated, regardless of the mask or whatever. My point is, you know, maybe there's different assignments or what have you, but I think we need to focus on how we can get that number up, to stay open.
And I, I agree with you on that point, I do. I just don't think, you know, the whole issue about do we require it or not or whatever, my, my number one issue is, is even bigger than that. My number one issue is that everybody feels a sense of safety and security. And, you know, if that means we wear masks, then we wear masks. So I, I mean, I think we're on the same page, it's just sort of thinking about it differently, but yeah. So we'll, we'll continue to work on this issue. I, I do think that the next step in terms of how do we bring our public back in to our meetings, and I'm curious to know, but I can talk to you about it later, about what you did in policy, if you opened it up, you said you opened it up in policy?
Our first one will be in August.
In August, okay. Yeah. All right, I think we're, is that it?
Can I ask a clarifying question? I just want to make sure we're fine with communicating the other recommendations like no temperature checks and things like that, sharing that with the public, and that we will come back through policy committee to discuss quarantine and masks.
Any thoughts? Go ahead, Mr. Morosky. Thumbs up, okay.
Bus transportation, is that, are we monitoring that? I know that there's advertisements by First Student that they're hiring drivers, probably not successfully apparently, and monitors, or are we still working from the distancing on buses?
No, we're, we're going to continue with what we ended the school year with, which is two, two per seat on the buses. And masks are still required on the buses.
Masks on buses?
Masks on all buses. Two per seat on the yellow buses.
So two kids per seat versus how many would there normally be in a non-COVID experience?
Two to three.
Okay, because again, if we don't have enough buses, it won't matter who's wearing a mask.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, so we are now with the item on the agenda for hearing the public. Consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings, we are convening this video conference call to include opportunity for public comment. Each speaker will have two minutes and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Consistent with the board's bylaws, the board has the ability to limit the, limit the hearing of the public on any single issue and will exercise the right to do so if needed. Once a request has, to speak has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive, provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. This request is consistent with board protocol and we appreciate your compliance. We reserve the right to not permit you to speak if you do not comply. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When the timer goes off, your time is up, please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. We ask that your public commentary be respectful of all those listening in. Thank you. We're ready? Who's letting them in?
We are, we are. And I'm sure we have four speakers this evening. We're going to begin with Yusuf Manir, followed by Mildred Patterson, followed by Aaron Up, and then followed by Julie Sellers. Ms. Mildred and Ms. Up, you have to accept the request to be able to speak. Go ahead, Yusuf.
Hello, you all know who I am. My name is Yusuf. I am a CPS alum and the former president of Young Activist Coalition. When I was 16 years old and a CPS student, whom you all were responsible for, I was threatened with arrest by an SRO whom so many of you have defended and suspended by the system of punitive discipline, which so many of you have refused to actually materially oppose. To be completely frank, I was traumatized by all of you and your failure to do absolutely anything to help students, especially students of color like me. The students of color were disproportionately targeted by SROs and every form of punitive discipline, because those systems were designed to target them. YSC has now been campaigning for the past year to correct your failures, to correct the criminalization and punishment of kids that this board and the SROs have continuously refused to address, because that would mean addressing your own failure. To do this, we tried to meet with you all nicely and explain in incredible detail over multiple meetings, the data that none of you had ever seen about SROs. We tried to show you that we had community support through an email campaign, through a petition, through a survey, through endorsement from innumerable community organizations. We tried rallying peacefully outside of the board building during board meetings. We did that for months. We tried handing out flyers to you all. We tried having conversations with you all. We tried everything to do this the nice way, but you all didn't listen. And so we tried something else, and that's why we're escalating now. We're escalating now, not because we think it'll be fun, but because you all have proven that you won't listen to anything else but the disruption of your own daily lives. That's why we've been, started to show up to board members' houses. That's why we'll continue to do things like this and things that will continue to escalate until you decide that you truly care about kids, that you truly care about doing what is right and standing with us. And until you stand with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Yusuf. Our next speaker is Mildred Patterson, followed by Aaron Up, followed by Julie Sellers. Aaron Up, you have to accept the invite to be able to speak. Go ahead, Mildred.
We can't, we can't hear you. Can you unmute?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. Oh, we can. I don't know what happened, we heard you for a minute.
Oh, I don't know. Hi, how are you guys doing this evening?
Good, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Mildred Patterson, as I said. I am a victims of crime advocate in West End. I'm also a graduate of Morder. It's an entrepreneurship class, that's a 14-week training. And I actually wrote a children's book called The Adventures of Harley the Hot Dog and His Friend the Bully. I was actually trying to get this, the book before the pandemic hit. I was going around the CPS schools, trying to get the book in the school, because it is a social issue. And I believe coming this school year, mental health will be on a rise, because the school, because of the kids, not, not to mention, I also was a CPS student, graduate, as well as educator in Cincinnati Public Schools. My last assignment was that preschool promise, Vine Street, with the preschoolers. But right now, I believe, I wrote a children's book, like I said, it's called The Adventures of Harley the Hot Dog and His Friends the Bully. It's about bullying. I'm interested to talk to the board and possibly present in front of you guys or to get the book in, in the schools. book in, in the schools, talking to the resource coordinator. The book, this is the book. I met maybe with Ms. Eve Bolton maybe over a year ago, and then here come COVID-19. I was starting, I am currently right now pushing a book to be in different schools. Like I said, this is my first book. I'm working on my second book that will probably have to do with PTSD. Like I said, this is the, the first book of many, is the Bully book. It's actually a whole plan that could be in all the schools. Some of the places that bullying takes place are the bathroom, the lunchroom.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Ms. Up did not accept the invite, so our last speaker today will be Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Julie.
Good evening, everyone. I am really looking forward to the time when we can all be together in person and have attendees live. I was wondering, you keep talking about how many people will fit in the banquet room and why would the board meetings not be scheduled in the ILC where there's greater capacity? And I wanted to know if the board retreat, when it will be, will it be in person and open to the public? I know that, all of you know that I have contractual rights to attend committee meetings, and I really feel like even if it's limited, I would like to be there in person along with all of you. There was a lot of discussion this evening about masks, and just today or yesterday, Andrew Brenner, he presented language, that Senate Bill 209, which would prevent universities in K-12 districts from requiring masks. Now, that information, that language has not been able to leave committee, and they're not in session, so I'm not sure if that's something that is going to be able to move or not move. But I, we will keep a close eye on it. I'm not sure why they want to do that. They don't trust the Board of Education to make the decision, and in his language, it would be the Health Department making that decision. But I also wanted to tell everyone that we are super excited. There is a grant that we received from AFT, and it's part of the National Back to School Campaign, and we have 20 teachers who are spending 20 hours a week going out and visiting families within the communities and to make sure that they feel comfortable and confident about returning to schools. We're really proud of our members. We, they, they hit the streets today, and they're going to be out from now until about early August. And we also have teachers who are bilingual who will be visiting our bilingual families. This grant has been funded by the AFT, and we've been working very closely with the district through communications and through the Tiana's office to make sure that we're going out and, and, and talking to families where there seems to be more confusion about the enrollment of students. We, for the thought exchange, August 9th meeting, is that there is going to be, it's at a staff survey. CFT can help to send that survey out to increase engagement of all members, but I also think that people would really like to be involved with some open forums where there can be some feedback and conversation. And I'm not sure, but we've been interviewing a lot of people running for city council, and everyone from city council seems to think that the city is still paying for nurses and crossing guards. I just want everybody to know that we lost the $5 million from the city when it was renegotiated about the abatements, but we also, we don't have the nurses or the crossing guards paid for by the city. And that is, I think, a misconception citywide, including by city council members. So if we could do something to make sure that people know it's probably costing us close to $10 million for nurses and crossing guards for their employees. And the last thing I want to say is CFT and CFOP voted last Thursday and Friday, and we ratified our contract. So you guys ratified it, we ratified it, so our contracts are all good to go. And I'm not sure when we will have a time to come together that everybody would be signing those, that signature page at the end of the contract. But if we can schedule that for one of the, a near future board meeting, that would be great. So thank you.
Okay, thank you all. All right. Does anyone have any kudos tonight? No kudos? All right, and you do?
Yeah, and I, and I've had this in the last board meeting, just excited about the back to school, are the block parties, but I've attended a couple, and they've been a very nice, radical, a lot of turnout. My enrollment, preschool enrollment is, is going up, and people are actually signing up for enrollment, lots of, lots of information about our career tech pathways, preschool, it's just been very good for the community, and everybody seems to enjoy it, and are even emailing me about the next one, which is only one left, July 31st, at Carson School from 12 to 12.
Okay, thank you. Any other kudos? All right, in Ms. Bates' absence, Mr. Murawski, please present the retirements.
My pleasure, President Jones, thank you. The list of retiring certificated personnel, Jean Basely, Annette Doris, Marla Givens, and William J. Gordon, thank you so much for your service at Cincinnati Public Schools. And our students, the next list is some of our civil service personnel who are retiring. So happy retirement to Rhonda Niehaus, who worked with us in food service, Patricia Reyes, who was a senior support specialist, and to Donna Wheeler, paraprofessional, we appreciate your service a great deal, and again, thank you for everything that you did for our community and our students.
Thank you, Mr. Murawski. Okay, moving on, our board matters topic this evening is expectations for the upcoming budget retreat, which we scheduled for August the 4th, I believe, in the evening. So, and it will be, that time will be exclusive to this topic. So Ms. Bolton, this was your suggestion, if you want to just give a brief overview and kind of lead us into that, and then Ms. Wagner, I believe you had a little bit of an exercise for us, so be prepared to do that one.
Thank you. Very quickly, because the treasurer is the one that really figured this out, I think, for us successfully. But yes, it's again, a generation, historically, a generation of money that has come to us because of this crisis, not an annual budget or not a five-year forecast, but indeed, frankly, almost three years of money that has to be figured out and, and then absorbed if we are able to evaluate how it's been spent. The treasurer's been working on a new budget process, the, the performance leadership team has been thousands of hours working on the budget that's come to fruition, and now it's in the final stages and indeed in need of final kind of board input regarding priorities. And so we wanted to have this retreat specific to the budget so that indeed it is reflective of what the community representatives on this board want to see for this year and impacting the following year, and even impacting the growth of the future as we are in our last decade of being 200 years old.
Okay, Treasurer Wagner?
Yes, so now for our new thing. So if you'll get your cell phones out or your laptop, whichever you prefer, and follow the website instructions that I gave you on the handout while I share my screen.
The only question, the only question that pops up is the last one, unfortunately.
Haven't started it yet.
Oh.
So go on your phone, open a web browser, and type in www.nant.com. Everybody there?
Well, Mike is helping me.
This is a new tool that we've been playing with in, in order to gather information in a very publicly transparent way. And so I've asked the board three questions. The first question is, what information do I need to know regarding the fiscal year 22 draft budget? So that we're going to use the answers to these questions to prepare the agenda for the retreat and information that they require.
Are we to do this now, or can we do it like at home later? So.
I think I'm okay. So what if I wanted to put more than one response? How do I get that in there? Just put it under?
Well, I think on this one, you can only do one. I didn't think about the first question, but just put a comma and keep typing.
Okay, a comma or a semicolon?
Yeah. First answer's up for those in the audience that can't see the screens. I need to know how ABA to S will actually be different, how we are allocating transportation dollars, how we'll be investing in the new diversity equity office so it can be effective. Another board member said review and consideration of the CLIF plan where the strategic priorities are addressed, and how much money is devoted to high schools and the new CPS in Heridian.
Do we have to wait on you for the next slide?
You do. I'm just waiting, is everybody ready to go to the next slide?
We're still waiting, I think, on some folks.
Can I submit it? Okay, I got four answers. And the fourth one was how do we maintain accelerating learning loss past 2024? Excellent question. Okay, you ready for the second one? What are my concerns about the fiscal year 22 draft budget? Less, less than five. And you can, we, this one, we allowed multiple answers, so you can do one, hit submit, do a second, hit submit.
Jen, can I ask, it says questions from the audience online after I submitted?
That's, just skip that. There is no audience, so I'm only allowed, I'm only allowed-
Right. So I just, should I do submit so I can make my list?
Uh huh.
Okay. Gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome. We need some background music. Anybody want to sing?
That's been great.
This is what I do on my policy committee meetings sometimes.
I knew you were gonna do that. We've spent too much time together. No, that's great. It's making me think faster. Yes, we're doing pretty well.
Uh oh.
Uh oh, what?
Can't figure out why I can't finish this sentence.
It's, you had 25 characters or less.
Oh.
So the little number at the right, so just abbreviate, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Sorry, I meant to warn you.
How many?
Characters? 25. So if you look it to the right, there's a little red number, it tells you how many characters you have left. This question we set up so that the more often a board member uses this same term, the bigger the text gets. So the size of the text is gonna be hard to do with four people, but... Let me know when you're ready to move on. We have growth, the CLIF, not enough to new CPS, continuing new things, and transportation. Still working, or can I move on?
I'm ready.
You're ready? Mr. Murawski, you ready? Ms. Bolton?
I think so.
Okay. Last question. At the end of the evening, what does success look like? Was that the CBA one?
It went up? Okay. How is it got it? What do you want by the end? All the things I want.
You're just spoiled, that's all. As I say to my grandchildren, Ms. Bolton, you don't get everything you want.
Oh, I'm used to that.
All right, so that concludes the questions. We will take this feedback and use it to build the retreat activities for the August 4th retreat. Thank you for-
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna go back to the original board matter item in terms of expectations. I need to ask Ms. Bolton, did this satisfy what you were looking for? Did you want to ask anything else or explain anything else?
No, I, I appreciate the time that you've devoted to this, I appreciate the treasurer's efforts to try to figure out a way to organize this, and hope that the other board members that were unable to be here tonight will also have an opportunity to submit. have an opportunity to submit. And I think this gives us direction and focus in a 677 or so million dollar budget, and three years in advance, and God knows what else, trying to return from COVID into in-person, big, big things happening. So I appreciate the time that you've given it, Madam President, and thank you, Treasurer.
Okay. Thank you. So we can move on. Um, we have a, the resolution from the 48-hour waiver. It is not on the agenda, but we added it. Um, Ms. Bowers, I'm going to ask you to present the resolution.
Yes. For me, I have a resolution to appoint Cincinnati Public Schools Preschool Expansion Organization Board Representatives. I'm going to read this in its entirety. Whereas the Preschool Expansion Organization Board of Managers leads the preschool expansion efforts in Cincinnati, as passed by voters on November 2016, as part of the five-year Cincinnati Public Schools levy, and as renewed in November 2020. And whereas the Preschool Expansion Organization Board of Managers is a representative of the community and nominated by the Board of Education, the Cincinnati Preschool Promise, and the United Way of Greater Cincinnati, and comprised of the following, and, five individuals nominated by the Board of Education, five individuals nominated by the Cincinnati Preschool Promise, and five individuals nominated by the United Way of Greater Cincinnati. And, whereas on July 23rd, 2018, the Board of Education approved the nomination of one individual from each of the five organizations or groups listed, Interact for Health, Families Forward, NAACP, Cincinnati Federation of Teachers, and a CPS preschool parent or a CPS parent with preschool experience. And now, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of the City School District of the City of Cincinnati appoints Christine Fisher and Laura Samregret as Cincinnati Public Schools Preschool Expansion Organization Board Representatives, serving three-year terms beginning September 1st, 2021, and ending August 31st, 2024. I present this resolution as read.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Mrs. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones? Yes. Thank you. So congratulations to Ms. Fisher and Ms. Samregret. And, um, if I might add, if I might just, um, ask Superintendent Amat, if you would ask Ms. Brooks to just notify them? That would be great. Thank you. Okay. All righty. Superintendent Amat, do you have a report?
I sure do. Thank you. I'm excited to present to you that we are telling our story. We knew we had to improve communications, so through a variety of outlets, whether it's radio advertisement, television commercials, news stories, social medias, or flyers, we are getting the word out about the wonderful happenings at CPS. Starting with our summer block party series, we are down to our last block party. It will take place at Carson, noon to 2:00 PM, Saturday, July 31st. So we hope to see our communities out and about, and getting information and having fun. Customer care will be there to help enroll families, and of course, our wonderful partners with the Cincinnati Health Department. Um, they will be there to, uh, provide vaccinations to anyone 12 years or older. I also wanted to share, after the, uh, block parties, we have additional opportunities for vaccinations. This story could be found on WLWT. So starting with Woodward, on Wednesday, July 21st, from 9:00 to 12:30. Rose Longconden, July 22nd, 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. And Data Montessori, July 23rd, 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM. Another wonderful story that was on WCPO and Cincinnati Herald podcast, we're getting the word out that vocational education, AKA, is career and technical education. I hear a lot, um, especially at the block parties, like, you should bring vocational education back. We have it. It's just under a new name, career and technical education. So there was a fantastic story out in the news. So we are proud to say that we have 11 career fields, 20 career pathways, CTE is in 13 of our 16 high schools, um, and kids can choose, uh, chosen pathway, better student engagement. Um, they also have the opportunity to earn college credit and industry-recognized credentials in every pathway. So again, getting the word out. Jumpstart. Our jumpstart program is for our preschoolers and kindergartners, the week of August 9th through the 13th. It's a four-hour morning session. Breakfast, lunch, and transportation is included. So if you are interested, please call 363-0123, and we want to get our youngest learners in and give them a jumpstart before the fall. Last but not least, is a shout-out to our students. We have published authors right here in Cincinnati Public School. We offered, uh, Junior Authors Program. It was an intense eight-week program, after-school program. And so, I just want to take a moment to recognize these published authors. Nina DiMarcaintanio at Kilgore, Reamer Joy at Silverton, Tamea Cardill at Clark, Nora Bohm at Kilgore, Carolyn Smith at Kilgore, Maddie Felsberg, CDA, and Jaslyn Rogers at North Avondale Montessori. We are so proud of our authors, published authors, and, um, there is a book signing at Ro Hill, July 24th, 2:00 to 4:00 PM. So I hope to see you there. That concludes the superintendent's report, along with the written recommendations submitted for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations?
No moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Bolton?
Uh, just one, and it is related to budget, and it's related to, to, you know, the, in the last few years, the expansion, uh, and much of it, certainly justifiable, the expansion of the central office area and the Ed Center, uh, not just the physical plan, but indeed the personnel, the expansion of the programs and reports and what have you. And I, and I think it would be good for us to, uh, take a breather, uh, and look and see what that's, uh, entailed. And I know that the administration's working on an organizational chart that it makes sense for all of us, that, uh, as we look at the new CPS. So I just, I think it's, uh, I think we have to be aware of that, and it is impacting our budget.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
No move.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll. Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Inquiries and updates, I just wanted to give a short, a really short, uh, update on where we are, where the board is in, um, the superintendent's search. Um, we, we, the board has developed a timeline to begin the superintendent's search. Um, the first step is to select an executive search firm, um, that places, among other things, community engagement as a key tool in the selection process. Um, we are prepared to issue an RFP for the search firm this week. Um, you can expect, um, to see something on our website and, and other outlets that, uh, of the RFP, the announcement about the RFP, as well as our timeline. Um, it is our expectation that we make a selection by the end of August. So we're hoping that we can get this out and get, receive some good, strong candidates for the, uh, search firm. Um, so again, you'll see it on some of the social media platforms. Once, when we get to that point, I think we want to make sure that we continue to provide regular updates of where we are in the process. And we continue to say and want our community to know that, uh, we are committed to transparency in this process, and community engagement is certainly one of the key values in, in the search for our new superintendent. So you'll be hearing more from us about, um, the process as we move forward. Okay. Any other inquiries and updates? Yes, Ms. Bowers?
Thank you, President Jones. I have, um, inquiries about a couple of requests that I, I think that I had to the administration. Um, there was a report, um, in the media regarding our data with achievement gaps for African-American students, from, I requested data for 20, for, from that art, from that article, because I didn't know where that data came from. So the data I requested was from 2019, those academic, um, numbers, in 2019, and 2015, 2019, 2020.
Yes, that was sent to you via email?
Okay. Well, I'll go back and check. I didn't, I didn't see that. And then I wanted to know, um, I made a nomination, or a request, for us to be nom, for us to put in a nomination OSBA for preschool, or early childhood learning, and our success to be, um, presented at the academic fair, and I wanted to know if you know where we were with that.
Yes. Uh, Vera Brooks was going to go ahead and put in the application.
Okay. Perfect. All right. And I'll go back and look for that. Thank you.
I believe I sent it, uh, last week. So, not too far down in your box.
And, um, Ms. Bowers mentioned OSBA, just so board members, I, I'm assuming that everybody got notice that OSBA conference, the Capitol Conference is going to be held. It's a physical, you go, you physically attend, and, uh, registrations opened up today. So, uh, if you're interested in attending, please let Pat know. And if, if we have six people from the district, then however many people from the district who go after six get to go free. So it's an opportunity for, maybe for those who, uh, don't often get to attend these kinds of things, um, it's an opportunity for them to go as well. Okay. Any other, uh, inquiries and updates? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah. Uh, on that, on the, uh, OSBA, you know, administration, I know we make presentations, but they're also welcome as part of that, getting up to six or what have you, uh, is of, uh, participating. The, the other piece is, last week, there was a two-day, uh, equity, uh, symposium of, by NSBA, and, uh, participated in that, and, and the number of the, um, uh, panels were fascinating, interesting, and it made us, it made me feel good about what we've been doing. But there was also a panel specifically about SROs, resource officers, and it was a very diverse, uh, panel of philosophy, and it was, uh, I think it's still available, but it had both extremes, uh, presented, both kinds of experts, as well as folks that are administrators and talk about it, kind of down the middle of the road. So I would encourage that. And then there was a panel talking extensively about the importance of extracurricular activities for children's, children's success. And it was, they were really emphasizing that those, that's one, and we all know this, but I, it was interesting to see what they were focusing on as an equity issue, and they were really emphasizing extracurricular as an equity issue. And then the police thing was, I mean, we got into it a bit, um, in a professional way, but I would encourage, if it's available, check with staff, I think it's still up and available, both of those panels.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, then, inquiries and updates? All righty. Assignments. Are there any assignments? Oh my gosh. Okay. That's, that's, uh, uh, yes.
Presentation from transportation.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. And I did not hear any assignments. So, having no other business, I declare the meeting adjourned. What time is it? 8:00?